Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alaria.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like us to take one moment of reflection for our service people, those that have lost their lives, those that are serving our country, our elected officials that are making the decisions for this country, and just this war is quickly over, and God be with our people. Madam Clerk?
Under the appointments for 9:30, there are proclamations for the following. One is April 6 through the 12 proclaiming that it's National County Government Week in Lorraine County. Lorraine County Offices and Agencies will have displays set up at Westfield Shopping, Town Mall on Saturday, April 5, 2003, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. There is also a proclamation for designating April as Fair Housing Month in Lorraine County.
There's the one for April 6th. Who is going to accept this?
That's just for us. We gotta do it. And Kelly's here for the Fair Housing.
Ron, would you like to accept this one? It's in the matter of proclaiming April as Ohio's Bicentennial Fair Housing Month. We have another here. And I believe Judge Lilly's here for that one. Judge Lilly?
This one is in the matter of proclaiming April as National Drug Court Month in Lorraine County. Whereas Ohio County Domestic Relations Court would like to establish April as National Drug Court Month in Lorraine County, Ohio. Whereas drug courts would like to focus on leadership for community-wide anti-drug systems, bringing together criminal justice, treatment, education, and other community partners in the fight against drug abuse and criminality. Whereas Lorraine Court programs are the original form of drug policy reform and combine intensive judicial supervision, mandatory substance abuse treatment, and drug testing, and escalating sanctions and incentives in order to break the cycle of drug addiction and tandem crime. Whereas judges, prosecutors, defense attorneys, treatment, rehabilitation, professional law enforcement, and corrections professional researchers and educators, national and community leaders, and others dedicated to the movement had a profound impact through hard work and commitment to their communities. Whereas the drug court movement has grown from the 12 original drug courts in 1994 to over 1,200 drug courts that are in operation in the planning stages. Therefore, we have resolved by Board of County Commissioners that we hereby declare the month of April 2003 as National Drug Court Month, recognizing the practitioners and partners who make drug courts' work and significant contributions that drug courts have made and continue to make in reducing drug usage and crime. And it is witnessed by your commissioners.
And I thank the Board of Commissioners and the Domestic Relations Court and the Judges and the Schrines, and particularly the participants in drug court, who have so much benefited from what the Commissioners have enabled us to do. Thank you very much.
Okay, let Julie go on, please.
At 10:30, there will be a second public hearing for the 2003 Community Housing Improvement Program, and 10:45 will be building codes under resolutions, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There was one advance.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye, with the exception of number one.
Under the auditors, reject the two bids received on March 18, 2003, for 2003 mid-size compact SUV. The one bid submitted did not have all the necessary forms as required, and the other was an excess amount under state term contract and pricing. Authorize the Auditor's Office to utilize House Bill 204, which in part states a county may purchase supplies or services from another party, including another political subdivision, instead of through contract to the Department of Administrative Services, as entered into on behalf of the county, if the county can prove that it can purchase those same supplies or services from another property upon equivalent conditions or specifications but at a lower price.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Commissioners, authorize salary increase for Thomas Forkowitz, Bailiff, Lorraine Municipal Court, effective retroactive to November 25, 2002. The bi-weekly rate will increase from $628.62 to $667.85. This amount does reflect the county's 2/5 share.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize the release and payment of retainage in the amount of $2,696 to Suburban Process Piping Incorporated for work performed in the 911 EMA Emergency Operations Center project. This project is complete and all the necessary proper work has been received.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve change order number one to Gene Reesaw Incorporated, Alaria, Ohio, in the amount of $298.70 for work performed at Murray Bridge Activity Center Kitchen Renovation, Alaria, Ohio. This change order is necessary for two reasons. For larger grease inseptor must be installed than originally specified per the city of Valeria, and new cabinets are needed to replace the existing cabinets.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Reappoint Commissioner Betty Blair and Commissioner Mary Jo Vacy as members to the OPWC District 9 Integrating Committee, effective May 24, 2003, expiring May 23, 2006.
So moved.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appoint and reappoint various trustees to Lorraine County Transportation Improvement District in accordance with Resolution Number 97-923, adopted October 9, 1997, in ORC 5540.02A and C2, effective April 30, 2003, as follows. Commissioner Mary Jo Vacy, Commissioner Betty Blair, Commissioner David J. Moore, County Engineer Kenneth P. Carney, Community Development Director Ron Twining, County Administrator James Cordez, Senator Jeffrey Armbruster, which is an ex-officio member appointed by Senate President, and a state representative will be appointed by the House of Representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Referring back to the 1997 resolution, at that time I suggested that the TID board be more evenly balanced and that we have some representation from the trustees, township trustees, and possibly the mayors. And I'd like to know what your thoughts are on that.
I thought at the time, and I still think as the beginning board, one that's being structured, that it needs some help from the administration here if it's to give any life to Lorraine County. Later down the road, we may get to that point, but I think it's better if we keep it in the structure that was originally formed. And this is parallels Medina Counties, at least it did at the time that it was formed in 1997. And I understand that Medina County has been successful on a couple of projects, and they also received funding in this latest state appropriations. One of four TIDS throughout the state has received funding. We did not, but we need to continue to work on. I think this will be a good thing for Lorraine County if we can get it to be functioning.
Well, this has been going on for six years. I would think by now it should be well-established.
We haven't done anything with it since Commissioner Moore came on board. We haven't even changed the structure to name him as a member of the board. And how long have you been here, Dave?
A long time.
So, there's work to be done on our part, and it's lagged behind because of a variety of circumstances. So this is just making it current, and where we go with it depends on us and who are on the board.
Well, it's up to both of you, but I still feel that there should be representation from the townships and some of the mayors, or a mayor.
And I thought it was just a housekeeping maneuver, so I didn't know I had to review what happened in 97, so I'm pretty well not equipped to have that discussion right now.
But can we hold it until you review it?
I'm fine with it right now. I just, if someone could explain to me why it's been going on since 97, nothing's been done. That's what I just heard. Is that true, or no? I don't...
We formed a TID in the hopes of securing planning money from the state. In 1997, they had funded four TIDS, and there was one seat, that was one spot that was available for funding. So we tried to access that funding, and it was not forthcoming. We had expended or authorized $10,000 to seek legal counsel. We had a set of bylaws which we were working on, which had not been implemented, if my memory serves me correctly. And since the funding wasn't there, it just kind of laid in limbo for a while. It was brought to the forefront again this year because, as I said, I believe the House put in their appropriation measure funding for four TIDS. It was brought to our attention that Lorraine County was not included, so I had contact with State Senator Armbruster, who has been an active member of our non-functioning TID ever since its inception, and he sought to have it included in the funding. Apparently, this is a popular concept, because I had conversation with him last Friday, and he said there are now over 20 TIDS in the state, but only the four that were Butler, Medina, yeah Medina, and there were two others, received any funding. And so I just, I think there are some benefits to it, and I think that we ought to relook at it again. It could be similar to our Airport Authority, and, I don't mean our Airport Authority, I mean our Lorraine County Port Authority. I think there are some benefits to it, so at least we'll bring the board current, and we can go back and look at the bylaws and see if, in fact, we want to proceed or not. But I think it's a measure that might be beneficial to all Lorraine County.
What's dollars for?
There are no dollars now.
No, but that's, if we get in, what's it, what can be used for?
Planning. That's what, well, I, those were initially planning dollars.
Right.
And we did a unique thing in Lorraine County through our county engineer by authorizing that bond for him to plan projects so that he can get them into the works. And usually, the planning is the thing that there's not money for. So it's a mechanism that we could use to perhaps enhance transportation in Lorraine County, all kinds of transportation. We have a...
Such as?
Our Lorraine County Transit Authority, such as the commuter rail, which may or may not come to Lorraine County, items such as that. We had a request from the City of Alaria about assisting them in the development of State Route 57, the portion that goes through their city. And as the state continues to dry up its funding to counties, the load is more and more dropping here centrally, because everybody's looking to enhance their dollars. So this may be an assist for us. It is not the final answer, but it is a planning tool, and I think that we at least ought to relook at its viability as a district for Lorraine County.
So the dollars that come into this TID was just going to be used for planning only? It can't be used for any other dollars?
They were Ohio Department of Transportation dollars, and they, in my recollection of it, they were specific for planning.
Okay.
I don't know what the new dollars are for, but I thought if there was money, we ought to get in line.
That's fine. Are we gonna have meetings?
Since we didn't get, we need to have a meeting, and I think we need to establish a meeting and to look at the bylaws and decide. That was one of the things I had put on my draft copy, that we ought to establish a meeting date for this TID.
Okay. I'll support it today, if we can get a meeting date so that we don't wait.
Do you want to set a date today?
No, I think, yeah, as long as we can have, yeah, if we can set a date, yeah, I think we should. The problem is, you can't do it on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, if you won't have the State Senator or the state reps there. So it has to be on Monday or Friday.
Okay. Do you want Teresa to facilitate?
If Teresa could facilitate that, I would appreciate that.
Okay. And I would just say...
If we could have it set within the next 30 days, I would appreciate that, too.
Okay. Thank you. Also, I'd just like to point out that we are one state, like this is not general knowledge, but we're one state representative short. We have two state representatives representing Lorraine County, and we're entitled to three. So I don't know how soon we're going to fill that other seat, and...
Tuesday.
Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
I think I said my piece.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, I do have an amendment given to me by Mr. Ennis this morning to include, as I read, approve and enter into Amendment Number Three and Four between the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Children and Families Council and Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Development Disabilities for the Help Me Go contract entered into June 25, 2002. This amendment is to reflect more accurate identification of the usage of TANF funds and HIPAA compliance language.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Approve a housekeeping resolutions in reference to Resolution Number 02135, adopted February 14, 2002, clarifying requisitions for Help Me Grow FYO2. The requisition's read Help Me Grow FYO3, and they should have read Help Me Grow FYO2.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. I think I voted Moore, you voted Moore. Gotcha.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for proposals from agencies to provide services to children ages zero to three under the Help Me Grow Initiative program to include, but are not limited to, service coordination, home visiting, transportation, speech and hearing evaluations, therapy services, and translation services. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on April 7 and 14, 2003. Proposals will be open at 2:00 p.m. Monday, April 21, in Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, appoint Helen Joan Lagerterio as member to the Lorraine County Children's Services Board to fill unexpired term of Maria Robinson, effective April 3, 2003, through February 10, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Community Development Department, award various contracts for CDVG FYO2 projects. One, Mason Construction, the amount of $9,900 for Amherst Township Hall Restroom Renovation. There were four bids. Estimate for said project was $12,960. Mason was the lowest and most responsive bid received to be paid from CDVG account Two, Smith Paving and Excavating, Norwalk, Ohio, in the amount of $19,720 for the Avon Lake Handicap Kerb Rams Project. There were four bids. Estimate for said project was $22,000. Smith Paving and Excavating was the lowest and most responsive bid received to be paid from CDVG account 126022501450421.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Award contract to EH Roberts, Alaria, Ohio, to provide emergency home repair assistance for furnace replacements for two applicants for CDVG formula. One, John Seivik, 154.5 West Main Street, South Amherst, in the amount of $2,431. And Lori and Nolan Atkins, 6171 Atrium Road, Alaria Township, in the amount of $2,040. Lorraine County Community Development Department requested seven quotes and only received one from EH Roberts.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorize various warrants to be issued to various contracts for home rehabilitation work for two applicants through the CHIP program. One, Birch Building Company, Lorraine, Ohio, for the home repairs to 288 Jones Road, Wellington Village, Ohio, for Amanda Bonnelli, in the amount of $4,988 to be paid from account 2240126014501110, property acquisition. The repairs include siding replacement, handrails to basement. Electrochrome plumbing are needed to ensure the health and safety of this residence. Resolution 03105, adopted February 13, 2003, assisted Mrs. Bonnelli in the purchase of said home in the amount of $8,500. Therefore, an additional lien of $4,988 will be placed on the property. Two, Don's Home Improvement, Wellington, Ohio, for the rehabilitation work at 505 Main Street, Wellington Village, for Irene Rhodes, in the amount not to exceed $7,980 to be paid from account 224012601450110. Community Development will pay only $5,000, and the remaining $2,980 will be paid by USDA Rural Development. Resolution 03218, adopted March 20, 2003, assisted Miss Rhodes in the purchase of said home in the amount of $8,500. Therefore, an additional lien of $5,000 will be placed on this property.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste, designate Saturday, May 17, 2003, as Lorraine County Tire Collection Day in Lorraine County at various locations. Liberty Tire Service of Ohio LLC will be the contractor for said event, and collection will be from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Authorize $6,560 for the advertising budget as follows. Chronicle-Telegram, $1,500. Adelphia Cable, $460. WOBL Radio, $600. Morning Journal, $1,800. WEOL, $1,900. And WJTB Radio, $300.
Also moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, approve Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court to request funding in the amount of $20,000 from St. Anne Foundation, $30,000 from the Stocker Foundation, and $10,000 from the Nordson Foundation, for a total of $60,000. These funds will establish the Family Education Court, a divisionary program focusing on truant use, with two main goals, in increasing school attendance and improve academic achievement in Lorraine County. There is no cash match required from the county.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, receive the 2003 Annual Highway Condition Report and 2002 Report on Bridges Over 10 Feet in Clear Span in County and Township Roads.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve the placement of Griswold Road and Station Road on Nuakas Tip. A, Griswold Road is to be winded to three lanes from Lake Avenue to Leona Street with an estimated construction cost of $2,442,000, with 80% federal and 20% local funding. Also, Station Row will be two separate projects, both having 80% federal and 20% local, for resurface and add four-foot paved shoulders with an estimated construction cost of $1,398,000 from Cracker Road to State Road 82, and then resurface and add four-foot paved shoulders with an estimate construction cost of $1,387,500 from State Road 82 to Sprague Road.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Reject the one bid received on March 18 for replacement of Vermont Street 0486 in La Grange Township. There was only one bid received, being 11.9% above the engineer's estimate, and instruct the clerk to readvertise for bids for the furnishing of all labor, material, and equipment for replacing Vermont Street Bridge 0486, La Grange Township. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on April 4 and 11, and bids will be open at 2:00 p.m. Friday, April 18, in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the furnishing of all labor, material, and equipment for resurfacing a section of Corey Road in Lorraine County. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on April 4 and 11, and bids will be open at 2:30 p.m. on Friday, April 18, in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second. Thank you twice. I'll call Vacy this time. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. Aye.
Under Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities, support the 1.69 renewal levy for Lorraine County Board of Mental Retardation and Developmental Disabilities that will be on the May 6, 2003 ballot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
I have no report to comment this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, County Prosecutor?
I would like to request an executive session regarding several matters of litigation.
Commissioner Blair?
Commissioner Vacy, I see your button, it says Local Government Fund.
Yes, and I have some here for you, too.
Thank you. And I think it would be appropriate if this Board of Commissioners would entertain some discussion about what is happening with the state representatives with respect to the various proposals and the elimination or the partial elimination of local government funds to our county, our cities, our townships, villages, and libraries. This is all information I've received in the last two days about this. There is a wonderful cartoon in the Chronicle Telegram this morning that depicts what's really happening, and their conclusion said the state faces a huge shortfall in the next two-year budget, and that shortfall must be dealt with one way or another. House Republicans' way is to force already suffering towns like Lorraine and Alari to make up for it. Now, that is leadership. I don't wish to castigate anyone in the legislature, but...
Let the editorials do that, I guess.
Yeah, but they are creating a tenuous situation for Lorraine County's government. You know, wherever I go, people are asking me, what is the state of Lorraine County's funds? And we're doing okay right now, due to good stewardship on the part of the Commissioners together with our county administrator, who has a large number, 14 shoe, I think. He's constantly reminding us of what we need to do to keep in line with our funding. And we have several outstanding requests for money this year that we have not acted upon because of budget considerations. And there's another article in the paper this morning asking about an additional judge for Lorraine County, together with an administrator. These are recurring costs if we, in fact, go forward with this. We have needs that need to be met. We have service to provide to the public. I mean, that's our job, is to provide service to the public. However, we are partners with the state, but I think that they're trying to sever their partnership when it comes to sending us local government funds that we have relied on for years as part of this partnership. And this one article in the paper was in the Plain Dealer on April 1. It says, "One of the proposals is to eliminate or dramatically reduce the local government fund which pumps 700 million into cities, counties, villages, and townships, and another 400 million into libraries. Lawmakers would give local governments the authority to replace the state revenue they lost by seeking taxes at the local level." Well, I want to thank them very much for that opportunity, and I want to remind my fellow Commissioners here, in case they've forgotten, that it took us five times on the ballot to get a quarter percent sales tax approved for the construction and operation of the addition to the Lorraine County Jail. If they have a shortfall, they should do their duty and not expect us to do it for them. So that's my song and dance. I hope we pass a resolution letting them know of our concerns, and not in an arbitrary fashion, because they have a tough job ahead of them, but so do we.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
Well, that's enough for now.
Okay, I just want to mention, too, April 1, the sheriff and I were in Columbus at a legislative luncheon in regards to this very same issue. And as a matter of fact, one of the committees was meeting, the House Committee was meeting on this, and I see that it did pass. Their funds were, our funds were cut in the House, but it's going to the Senate, and I believe it's in the Senate Committee today. But what they're predicting, and the CCAO is predicting, that by the year 2005, local government funds will be eliminated completely. If this goes through right now, we would lose approximately 58% of our local, our funds. And John, I think you predicted that that was like $6 million?
Approximately of about $6 million annually. That's correct.
And I came back with a stack of information that John and I are reviewing in regards to this. But I would also like to suggest that maybe we hold a meeting and have someone from the CCAO come down here and talk with us, because this not only affects us as county Commissioners, but it affects the townships, the municipalities, the libraries, our Human Service Department, so many other departments, and it's of major concern. I think it's a good idea, Commissioner Blair, to send a fax down immediately and let them know that we are uniting in Lorraine County, and we're not supporting any cuts whatsoever. And as a matter of fact, when they mandate us to do some things, we hope that they will fund those mandates. But there's a packet of information here. I can have this copied for you, but it talks about workers' compensation, cost allocation, TANF spending, Title 20. There's cuts in just about every area you can think of. Emergency Management Agency, ethics filing fees, and it's just all over the board here. So I would suggest, and I would like your support, to have someone from the CCAO come down here and have a meeting, and invite all these different agencies and communities to back us and fight the battle.
Yes, Jim just pointed it out, and this is what I briefly shared with you before the meeting, that they're taking public testimony on the budget at the State House on Friday, which is tomorrow, April 4, Saturday, April 5, and at 1:30 PM on Sunday. We can't, the meeting is a good suggestion, but we can't wait to take any kind of action to let them know of our concerns.
No, but I would certainly hope that we can let them know that Lorraine County is uniting.
Yes, that's fine. And you talked about a 58% cut. Let's talk about, in real terms, what that might mean for Lorraine County next year. You know, Lorraine County trends that we have been very generous with them in the last couple of years in funding them because we had money available to, in fact, do that. And as our budget tightens, we're going to have to look at, what do you call those, Jim? Non-mandatory, that's not the right term.
Discretionary.
Discretionary spending on non-mandatory services.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't want to be here if we have to do that. I mean, that's...
It's going to be worse than that, Commissioner. We're already in a revenue deficit position with regards to mandatory operations, so...
When did that happen?
Yesterday.
It happened...
I was wondering, we passed a revenue balance budget, and I'm wondering, when did the deficit start?
Well, we passed a balance budget.
All right. When did that happen?
Well, actually...
Do you think it's going to happen? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, no. We didn't put any money on the inside millage, on bond retirement this year. And that money went into our operating revenue, which inflated our operating revenue, but we can't continue to do that year after year.
Are we in deficit right now? If we are, then we passed some resolutions today, maybe we should be...
We are using surpluses that are in the bond retirement fund right now.
Oh, I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that.
So we call this where the surplus comes. If you don't have a surplus, and you look at true operating costs, and you look at true revenues, I think you'll find an alarming trend.
For the past two months at Noacka, they have sponsored, County Commissioner, Cuyahoga County Commissioner Peter Lawson Jones has sponsored meetings with the eight-county area, including the five counties of Noacka. And Larry Long has been at both of these meetings, Executive Director of CCAO. There is serious, the things that we mentioned today are not relating to social service issues so much, and there is a grave concern about how this is going to affect the very poor in our community because of the services that we are, we may or may not be able to extend to them. And this is far-reaching. And again, I say, we have been able to keep our heads above water last year and this year, but the belt is continuing to tighten, and this is like the waiting for the last shoe to drop, and this is a really big shoe. It's even bigger than Jim's.
I have sent letters to legislators encouraging them not to, well, encouraging them to vote against any more cuts. And I believe as a board, we could send another fax down there, but I think we have to send it to all those that are in the committee. And also, you know, there's a lot of talk in Columbus about the legislators looking for new areas where the Commissioners could increase tax and impose taxes. And what's really happening is they're throwing it on our shoulders. They're making so many cuts that it gets to the point where we are the bad guys and have to impose those taxes. Or look for other ways to balance our budget and make other cuts, and it's impossible to give the services that we have been providing and make additional cuts. So the only other thing they're saying is, okay, you passed the tax, and we're the good guys. But that's a heck of a way to balance their budget, is on our backs. Anyway, here's your badges, and let's decide what we would like to do. Jim, there's one for you. And there's two extra ones here.
What's a line? I don't need no stinking badges. I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But as a movie buff, I had to take it, okay?
So what are your thoughts on it?
I will resent a resolution identifying the concerns that have been outlined this morning. I'll be happy to help prepare it.
And I would like to include that we are uniting here in Lorraine County.
Fine.
Uniting?
Uniting, and I'd like to have that meeting.
I don't mind with the meeting, but I don't know about uniting. The whole process of us as Lorraine County citizens taxing ourselves with sales taxes, sending it down to the state, and then sending it back to us, which we're talking about $10 million. Where all the bureaucrats all get a little piece of the pie when it goes down to Columbus, and it comes right back to us. And that's what we're talking about, the dollars that come back to Lorraine County here. I don't think we're in a position of telling the state what to do with their budgets. I do believe in local government. I would rather see that tax money stay here instead of going back down there. I mean, that's my position, so...
Well, they don't want to send any of it back to us.
Well, I made a statement a couple of months ago regarding taking care of our own county by trying to promote some economic development initiatives, and that's kind of where my position is. So I think, I mean, I'm not going to support a resolution to say, don't cut our money, because I feel like I've never felt like asking for a handout. And we have to control our own. I've made several statements regarding this since I've been here, that we are in trouble. It was on the horizon, and now we're there, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions. When it happens, it's out of our control. If we have to go down in the fourth and fifth and sixth and testify, then we should.
I would think, you know, that they should have controlled their budget.
No, I agree.
If they had better management down there, maybe they wouldn't be looking for ways to cut ours.
That's fine, but it's out of our control, and any way to participate is, hey, I have a feeling it's going to be right back on the three of us, and how we're going to have to manage this county. And we're going to have to do it on our own without the funds from the state. I don't see, I have yet to hear anybody say, oh, we don't think it's going to happen. I think it's happening. I think we're going to have to make the serious cuts, and I think it's going to be some real hard decisions, so...
They're going to be hard decisions anyway without having the local government fund funding cut off.
Cut.
And that 5% tax that's paid by everybody in Lorraine County goes to the state, and they redistribute that on a given formula.
Mm-hmm.
The quarter percent tax goes for the operation and construction of our jail. That comes back to us in total, I believe. And the other half percent that was initiated several years ago is what goes to our general operating funds. So I think that...
The only other avenue here is for them to increase taxes, and that's how I see it. I can't, I'm not going to support that.
Well, yes, but they're very willing to offer us the opportunity to increase taxes after they take away what they've been sending to us.
But we've had several discussions in this room regarding people getting match funds when they come in here from the judge, from family, job and family, saying, hey, we got this great program. We, all we need is $100,000, and we can get a half a million from here. And I think, I've heard it from the Commissioners up here, saying that we'll fund it as long as the money's coming from these mandated programs, but once, or unmandated programs. Once the money's cut, though, we're going to cut. It's pretty much, it's just a trickle down, it sounds like to me. It's the same premises that we put on people that come to us, and I don't think they like it when their funding gets cut and we have to cut our match. So I think it just goes up and down both ways when it comes to the money, so.
Yes, it does. I accept that. I would just like to say that when I was a township clerk and the formula was changed for the distribution of local government monies, the three lobbying associations, the County Commissioners Association, the Ohio Municipal League, and the Township Trustees and Clerks Association, were told that the corporate taxes, et cetera, would be distributed back on the basis of this formula. And there was, and then when there was growth in that fund, that growth would be distributed as well, and there were some concessions that transpired at that point in time. Well, I think that probably a lot of the history is gone from the state representatives regarding that, and now they're looking at their problems, and their problems are significant. I understand that. But we are supposed to be partners with the state, and the Ohio Revised Code tells us what we can and cannot do, and I think this is a pretty poor way to treat your partners, and I...
I'm not happy with the way we're being treated either.
Well, so I think that we need to make our voices heard, whether it makes any difference or not, just because it might not, you don't not send your message.
That's fine.
So I did make a motion that we send a letter in opposition to this, inciting the reasons and what it's going to do to Lorraine County. I think we need to be a little specific so that they'll know. There are varying sizes of counties with small populations, and we are one of the top 10 counties in the state regarding population, and I don't think we can sit back and let this happen to us without voicing our objection. So I'll so move. Is there a second to my motion?
There is a second-tier motion, and I totally agree with you. And, you know, you said trickle-down effect. I brought information back, too, about foreclosures, and there's statistics in here on what's happening in Lorraine County, for example. And that's funding that they have cut. You heard them not too long ago, just a few weeks ago, come in here and say that there is no money for homeless centers. Okay, then let's talk about it. Lorraine County, 1994, there was 475 foreclosures, and by 2001, we went up to 1,111 foreclosures, 134%. Here's another county over here, Mercer County. They're up to 374%. It goes on and on. Here's 493%, Holden County. How, you know, what do they expect from people, and yet they want to increase taxes? These people can't afford a house, and they want to increase taxes? Something wrong with this. So I totally agree, Betty. The letter's got to go down, and I think anything we can do to put pressure on them, let them know, you know? Just because they have a paycheck, there's people out here that can't live.
No, I agree. I think, I'm against increased taxes, too, and that's why I'm not going to support this, because I don't see any other resolution to the issues in the state. And we're talking about state issues here that, I'm telling you, I think they've already made up their minds, and I think they're going, I think they've already made their decisions. It's going to be between the Senate and the governor, and I think that's where it's at. So I'm not, I see supporting this resolution as supporting an increase in taxes at a state level, and I'm not going to support that.
But if you don't, it's not going to be increasing taxes at the local level.
Maybe.
What difference does it make?
Maybe not. Not if we can cut and make the right decisions. And I think if we can make it an efficient, I think we can make it a little bit more efficient, but we'll visit that when it comes.
But, and we will have to, but more efficient to the tune of $6 million out of a $60 million, do the percentage, do the math. I mean, this, excuse me?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight what?
That's a revenue balance.
Oh, well, then, six over forty-eight is one-eighth. That's even more than one-tenth, I think. I have to go back to my, and this was without calculators, but it's a serious problem. And I just, it's not just the county's problem, that's the issue. It's affecting each of our 30-some political subdivisions here, together with the libraries. And it's going to affect our way of life regardless, so it's an important issue.
Madam Clerk, can I take the vote, please? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Madam Chair, on a nicer note, may I say something different under my Commissioner's Report?
Yes.
Tomorrow morning, the Lorraine County Community Alliance will be meeting at the Community College, and we're sponsoring, it's ODOT's Government Day, ODOT District 3's Government Day is being sponsored there. Tom Alari, ODOT District 3 Director, and his assistant Beth Wilson, together with Rebecca Gray, the Administrative Coordinator of the Alliance, have put together a full day worth of information sharing about what's going on with transportation. And Noacka will have representatives there to talk about funding through their various programs, together with our Ken Carney, our Lorraine County Engineer. So I would encourage anybody who's interested to drop by, starting at 9:00. And I just want to say, last night, I had the privilege of attending the Ohio Oberlin Improvement Organization's annual banquet, and they're going to get an historical marker. Elizabeth was there. She made sure that I looked at the marker, and that's going to be dedicated on April 12, and that's very exciting for Oberlin and our bicentennial. Together with this, I just have to tell you about the Oberlin Choristers. They were the presentation last night. Unfortunately, I've only lived in Lorraine County all my life, and this was the first time I heard these young people perform. They are fantastic, and I'm going to suggest to Jim and Sandy that perhaps we can get them to come to the fair this year when we have our bell casting.
They already are.
Well, that shows you what I know.
Well, I'll show you my ad in here.
Your ad in there. I thought maybe your picture was in there.
Yeah, I'll try to see if I paid some money. I want to see if I got it.
Go get your own copy. That's mine.
Yeah, what's up with that?
All right.
There it is. See, look at that. See?
Well, I didn't, isn't that nice?
That's pretty. Get your money back.
Well, listen, have you heard these kids that are...
Yeah, I know some of the kids that are on there. They're a great group of kids.
And they did a fantastic...
They were, Sandy already scheduled the, I'm trying to say Sandy's address, she already scheduled the...
Did you already do that?
And she...
All right, that's great. Well, they had this fantastic bicentennial program, and they were wonderful. I'm so glad that everybody's ahead of the game but me.
Oh, no, no. I wouldn't say that.
But they were fantastic. So that concludes my report. Commissioner Vacy, thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, I have, I'll do, give you guys a little report on the Main Street program, but I see that they showed, some of them showed up, so I'd rather have them tell you what's happening with Main Street right now. There's some exciting things, and how many are here? Four of the directors of the five, four of the five are here, and they had some positive news for you guys, and I thought, instead of me saying it, why don't we have them tell you what's happening? How's that? Is that okay, guys? Guys and gals?
I'm Phil Van Troen, 142 Middle Avenue, Alaria. Many thanks to the Commissioners for giving us a chance to come here and speak today. I'm the Associate Director of the Downtown Development Organization, Main Street Alaria, and in that capacity, I'm fortunate to have the opportunity to work with no less than four other Main Street Directors from organizations in Amherst, Lorraine, Oberlin, and Wellington. And we have the common goal of furthering economic development in our downtown areas. Our Main Street Consortium has come here today specifically to offer our gratitude... Our Main Street Consortium has come here today specifically to offer our gratitude to Commissioners Betty Blair, David Moore and Mary Jo Vacy for your continued funding support for our organizations and your dedication to all avenues of economic development here in Lorraine County. Downtown Elyria in particular is really a symbol of community economic health and local quality of life, pride and community history. A vital downtown retains and creates jobs, which also means a stronger tax base. And downtown is also a good incubator for small businesses, which as we all know are the building blocks of a healthy economy. A vital downtown can reduce sprawl by concentrating commercial activities and using community resources such as tax dollars and infrastructures wisely. And Elyria is fortunate to be something of a tourist attraction itself by virtue of the character of its buildings, locations and selection of unique businesses and events held there. This in turn serves as a whole new economic engine. Due in large part to the generosity of you, this board, Main Street Elyria is now even closer to realizing its mission to make historic downtown Elyria the vibrant heart of the city. We're now a community development corporation, which has greatly expanded the number of potential projects our organization can take part in. And we've seen the need for a private nonprofit organization to stimulate, stimulate building rehabilitation in the city. So we're now preparing to eventually purchase downtown properties for repairs, sale or lease. And our newly funded downtown storefront renovation program offers rebates to property owners totaling up to $26,000 for a portion of the costs incurred in an approved restoration. And we expect the program to show visible results in the facades of several buildings on Broad Street by the time summer rolls around. The storefront renovation program's modeled on award-winning programs throughout northern Ohio and I think it's going to prove to be one of Elyria's most important downtown revitalization tools. These are only a couple of the exciting programs and projects that Main Street Elyria and the rest of Lorraine County's Main Street programs are working on now. And we feel certain that even more economic spurs will result from the efforts of our staff, volunteers and public and private donors in the future. I won't take up any more of your time. I'm sure my fellow members of the Lorraine County Consortium have plenty of interesting things to tell you about their groups. As an aside, Main Street Lorraine Director, John Hauser, had a conflicting appointment today and he was unable to attend, but he sends his sincere thank you as well. Thanks.
Good morning, my name is Lesha Boichuk Schneider and I'm the Main Street Director in Amherst. On behalf of our fair city, I would like to thank you for your continuous and generous support of our Main Street program. For those of you who are not familiar with Amherst, I would like to give you a short little background. Amherst is known as the sandstone center of the world. In fact, not only do we have fine examples of sandstone buildings in the local community, such as our City Hall, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, but Amherst Sandstone is nationally used to build Microsoft founder Bill Gates' Seattle-area estate, for example. And Amherst Sandstone is also, and was internationally used. The Parliament Buildings in Ottawa, Canada, and Old City Hall in Toronto, to name a few, and even as far away as the Kremlin in Russia. Through the concerted efforts of the Amherst Downtown Investment Association, formed in 1998, Amherst continues to revitalize its quaint historic downtown. Our mission statement reads, "To promote and maintain an historic and economically vital downtown that is attractive and accessible to people of all ages and background." Some significant goals obtained towards fulfillment of this mission are, in December 2002, Amherst was designated as an official Main Street community by Downtown Ohio, Inc. We are passionately working the four-point Main Street approach in order to bring our revitalization to fruition. Amherst was awarded a $400,000 Community Development Block Grant. Indeed, Amherst has had quite a facelift. I ask all of you to come and visit us. For example, we have a new parking lot and especially notably in the building facade improvement of this area, of this grant, we have 30 projects completed and 14 underway. Private matching funds just to match the grant are $239,453.49. Private investment outside the grant, and this is of particular note, is $1,282.45. Sorry. We believe this augur, this alone augurs wealth for the faith that Amherstonians have in the revitalization of our downtown. And these figures are just for the physical improvements, which we believe is the first step to revitalize. So once again, we thank you, the county commissioners, for your support. We in Amherst certainly appreciate it and understand we couldn't have done it without you. So with such good partnering, we look forward to future cooperation. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Epley from downtown Wellington. Just wanted to let you know a few things that have been happening in Wellington. We also are, I've been granted CDVG funds, we're in the second year of that. This past year, some of our highlights, we had 10 buildings improved in our downtown business district, $250,750 reinvested in downtown properties, six new businesses opened this past year. Last year, we had over 150 volunteers who donated 1,676 hours to assist downtown Wellington's program. We provided free design assistance to 10 downtown property owners through our partnerships with Ohio Historic Preservation Office and Pogomire Design Group. On October 12th, downtown Wellington hosted a tour of preservationists from across the United States who were in Cleveland at the National Preservation Conference. Visitors were very impressed with the history and revitalization efforts of Wellington's historic downtown. And we, as part of our CDVG, the village has completed downtown sidewalk lighting replacement, created a new 54 car, parking space, parking lot. And for last year, we had total reinvestment in the downtown area was $1.4 million and we expect to see a similar amount this year. Currently, we're working with a new construction project downtown, $850,000 project, which will add four new retail spaces downtown and four 1,500 square foot residential spaces uptown. And we're working with the owner for the design on that. We're also, for this year, we've just unveiled a streetscape plan, which will see new benches, gateway signs, trash receptacles, planners, banners. It's going to be about $120,000 project, which we hope to have in place in the next several years. And also, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their support of our program and also invite you to attend the Fourth of July celebration in downtown Wellington. Downtown Wellington has secured the performance once again of the Fireland Symphony Orchestra to perform as part of our celebration for Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hello, I'm Jeff Cummings from Berlin. I also would like to thank the commissioners for your support. All these Lorraine County communities have greatly, as you've seen, benefited from your support. I'm just going to take a few minutes just to tell you some of the projects that we've been able to do with your generous help. We have, in our design committee, we've ordered decorative banners for the downtown. Those, we have flags up now, the banners will be going up probably in the next few weeks. We have a downtown cleanup program to help the merchants downtown keep their sidewalks clean. And we are also working on a street furniture update and have decided to participate in the America in Bloom project. If, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but it's basically a beautification program. It's a nationwide program. And the basic idea is to bring more flowers into the downtown. Hopefully then, more people will come in and that should be great. The organization committee has done a membership drive. We have more than tripled our membership in the Main Street program. And our economic restructuring committee has worked on a business recruitment packet, downtown revitalization plan, downtown business inventory. And we have also, we turned in an application in 2002 for the grant that both Amherst and Wellington have received. Unfortunately, we were denied. We're going to be applying again and we were told that we do stand a good chance to get that. Our promotions committee has planned many successful events that have brought thousands of people into Oberlin's downtown. And as you've probably heard, Oberlin is now just one step away from becoming a historic registered district, the whole downtown. And the, yeah, promotions committee is exploring ways that we can then take advantage of that and try to bring more people into Oberlin and Lorraine County. That's a brief rundown of what we're doing. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself. I just started in September, became permanent in January, I took over for Kate Reagan. And she was on board when this consortium went through. And as part of that, we have, when Kate left, we, she was both a chamber director and Main Street Director. As part of this support from you, that's also helped us to hire both a Main Street Director and Chamber Director. So now, rather than splitting the duties, Chamber can actually concentrate fully on the Chamber. Main Street can concentrate more fully on what Main Street has to do, which has resulted in more than double the amount of work getting done. Just being able to focus has really had a big impact in Oberlin's program and we look forward to continuing. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
They'd do a better job than me doing a report, so thanks, guys.
Wonderful update. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, we usually don't get people coming back to say thanks.
Oh.
Thank you, that's all I have for my report, Commissioner Vacy.
Okay, I have several things here. Very often, I'm being asked, well, I can give my report after, what's on there? No, I've got a lot of things here. Anyway, the first thing I wanted to say is, I take it back. Let's have our public hearing because we have people scheduled at 10:30. I'll just wait.
The second public hearing for the 2003 Community Housing Improvement Program.
Good morning. This is Lorraine County's proposed 2003 CHIP application. This is the second of two required public hearings to make application for Lorraine County's proposed 2003 CHIP application. The first public hearing was conducted on February 6th of 2003. The proposed activities that are listed before you as Ron passes them out. The first one is private owner rehab, $233,100 to assist seven owner occupied houses at an average of $33,000 per unit to provide full rehabilitation services to bring the houses up to state residential rehabilitation standards. This will include appropriate lead-based paint assessment and abatement. It is anticipated that five recipients will need to have properties tested for lead-based paint, which is considered a secondary outcome. Assistance will be in the form of a 0% deferred loan. Also as a secondary outcome, to assist five recipients of private owner rehabilitation with funds with relocation. If necessary, to do the lead abatement, paint abatement at an average of $1,200 per household. Funds may be used for nominal lodging, meals and transportation cost. The second activity, home repair, $78,000 to assist 12 owner occupied houses at an average of $6,500 per unit to address one or two health or safety concerns in the house. For example, plumbing, electrical, heating, roofing, foundation repair. Assistance will be in the form of grants for households under 60% of LMI standards or a five-year forgivable loan at a 0% interest for households between the income of 61% to 80% of the LMI standards. The third activity is down payment assistance slash rehabilitation, $56,000 to assist two new home buyers at an average of $28,000 per unit for down payment slash closing costs and rehabilitation of units to bring the houses up to state residential rehabilitation standards. Assistance will be in the form of a 0% deferred loan. As a secondary outcome, to provide pre-purchase counseling and post-purchase counseling for up to one year from the time of loan closing to the two new home buyers at an average of $200 per household. The counseling is required by the Housing, Office of Housing and Community Partnerships and will take place prior to closing. Pre-purchase counseling will cover such topics as resolution of credit issues, reviewing documents slash statements necessary to complete the mortgage application process, establishing and maintaining a monthly budget and a fair housing component. Post-purchase counseling activities will include money management issues and offer home maintenance education such as simple repair and how-to courses. The fourth activity is the CHIS, is the Community Housing Improvement Strategy for $12,500 to prepare the county's Community Housing Improvement Strategy. The CHIS document is required to be updated every three years in order to remain eligible to apply for the Community Housing Improvement Program. This document will be good for five years and will be required to be prepared and approved by the Office of Housing and Community Partnerships prior to submission of the next CHIP application. And I provided a summary of what I just spoke about for fiscal 2003 CHIP summary, private owner rehab, $233,100 to assist seven applicants at an average cost of $333,300. Home repair, $78,000 to assist 12 applicants at an average of $6,500. Down payment assistance slash rehab, which includes pre and post counseling, at $56,000 for two applicants at an average of $28,000. The cost of updating the county's CHIS, $12,500. Implementation cost, $71,200, which is 19.4% of the private owner rehabilitation activity, which is $233,100. And administration, which is 19.32% of the entire application of $500,000. The cost of administration would be $49,200. I provided you a breakdown of the income limits for 60% and for those that fall into 80%. And I've also attached a timeline for the proposed CHIP timeframe. Are there any questions at this? Oh, I know, I did forget something. In the ad originally, we said, said that we were going to apply for $555,000, which included Habitat for Humanity. And we just found out that we cannot fund Habitat for Humanity because they currently do not own any property in our political jurisdictional area. They only own it in, own it in the entitlement area. So we cannot include them with our application at this time.
So does that reduce the amount that you're applying?
That reduces the amount, so now we can only apply for the $500,000.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone that has any comments or questions? And if anyone in the TV audience would like this information, I'm sure that they can call our Community Development Department and request a copy of the information you just gave us.
Yes.
And the qualifications and that and the requirements?
Yes.
Okay, just for the public's information, would you give that telephone number?
My phone number is 440-328-2324 and my name is Kelly Glenn, I'm the Assistant Director. And also, this application is due next Wednesday, April the 9th. And we don't anticipate hearing anything until September 1 of 2003 if we were funded. This is a competitive application. And just to remind everybody to please sign in because we need that to prove that I actually did a public hearing. Are there any other questions?
Do we need a motion for approval of this application? Madam Chair, I'll move.
A second.
Ron, did you have something to add to this?
No, I don't, thanks.
Okay, I saw you standing there.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
That ends our public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. 10:45.
Do we want to continue with the agenda? Do we want to go to building codes first or?
Well, go to the building codes, that's 10:45. Well, you better wait a few more minutes. All right, well, I'll just give my report. Yeah, finish the agenda, it's not that much. Okay, what I did want to do was to inform the public of when our meetings are broadcasted and what channels they're on because I'm often asked, you know, we know that you're on television, what channel is, at what time, what day? And we do have the information here. Channel 31, for example, Amherst, Avon Lake, Bay Village, Elyria, North Ridgeville, South Amherst. And that's channel 31. Channel 23, Avon. Channel 23, Avon, Sheffield, Sheffield Lake. Channel 10, Oberlin. Channel 19, Vermillion and Lorraine. Channel 11, Camden, Henrietta, Kipton, Wellington Village and Township. Grafton, La Grange, Eaton, Penfield, and Rochester. Broadcast schedule is Saturday at noon from 2:00 p.m. and Monday, 11:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. And they're, they're usually two hours. And if anyone misses that, they can always call the office, and we will be happy to let them know when we're being broadcasted. Other things that I have, in the, on the back table there, I had put some information on the structure of the Ohio judicial system. And if anyone, of course, in the audience, that television audience would like copies of that, again, they can call the office and we'd be happy to send them those. And I just wanted to report to the Board, too. As you probably know, CCAO is looking into pooling for health insurance. And I asked them the other day if they had any idea of what the premiums would be or what the coverage would be. And they said that they didn't have that yet, but they would hope that they would have those details at summer conference. And also, Corsa, which I'm really pleased about because saves county so much money. But we now have 55 counties out of the 88 counties in the state of Ohio that participate in the Corsa insurance program. And I did bring a lot of information back, like I said, that I shared with John and Jeff and Teresa, and of course, Jim. And my last thing here, I want to express my congratulations to our new Lorraine County Prosecutor, Jeff Manning, and to express that he has shown unmatched integrity and commitment to the administration of justice, especially in an unusual and difficult, difficult transition. However, the attention of the public and the press in this county over the destruction of unexplained shredded documents overshadows everything else about his new administration. He was not involved in, and he deserves a fresh start. Unstained by accusations of impropriety or the appearance of impropriety. We have a, a problem. The people and the press want answers. We, as elected representatives of the people, want answers. The issues are many. What documents were stored and destroyed in these Lorraine County offices? Were they purely private? If so, why were they stored in public offices paid by public treasury? Were they public documents? If so, why were proper procedures and rules not followed to review them? Who ordered such documents destroyed? There was no Lorraine County prosecutor sworn in with the authority to make such decision at the time the activity apparently took place. Who was involved? When, where, and why were such decisions made and enacted? How can we promulgate clear and unambiguous rules to ensure that no such decisions to store or destroy documents in Lorraine County offices occur again? What tools do we have to enforce such rules? What liabilities can the county have for such actions? We cannot ask the very persons involved in selecting and destroying documents to fairly and impartially explain such facts and liabilities they may impart to Lorraine County citizens. Even if their answers were accurate, detailed, and fair, they would always carry the stigma of bias, the stain of conflicts of interest, or the blemish of self-interest. It is also unfair to ask new county prosecutor, Jeff Manning, as one of his first acts, to investigate the activities of his own new staff. A house divided against itself cannot stand. And an, and an office staff affected, I'm sorry, expected to investigate itself would never again attain the trust necessary to freely pursue all the duties inherent in that the Lorraine County prosecutor. We need to stress to the public and the press that we are a nation, a state, and a county ruled by laws, not men. If there has been this wrongdoing, we will not tolerate hiding it, but we'll reveal it. Thereby, we establish the integrity in the eyes of the public and press necessary for everyone to know the truth, fairness, and justice are not merely empty words, but the foundation of Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office and all of our Lorraine County office and elected officials. We can ask nothing else than this. Therefore, I move that a special prosecutor and investigator be appointed, fully funded, and set to investigate, report upon, and if necessary, prosecute all matters related to shredded, destroyed, and/or temporary or permanently missing documents or other objects such as computer records, tapes, and photos involving the Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office, the Lorraine County Courts of Common Pleas, or its clerk of courts, and accomplish, and accomplish by or at the request of any agent, employee, or elected official. I believe that Jeff Manning deserves the full support of Lorraine County Commissioners as a, as the new, new Lorraine County Prosecutor. I believe in his integrity and dedication to truth and justice. I believe he deserves our full commitment to do his job with a fresh start, unhindered by the actions of anyone prior to his taking office. The public and the press also need to give him what he deserves, a fresh start and a full opportunity to display the integrity and dignity to which we believe he is committed. Therefore, I ask that a special prosecutor and investigator be appointed with all the funds and time necessary to invest the allegations of shredded and disappeared documents and any related matters in the Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office. We should choose someone of the highest integrity and diligence for this position. Further, he or she should be someone with no ties to Lorraine County, its politics, or public officers, most past or present. Finally, I would suggest that such individuals be an independent or Democrat to avoid any accusations of partisanship, impropriety, favoritism, or political gain from nondisclosure. We need to complete, we need a complete, impartial, and unbiased person with no other interest than the relentless pursuit of truth. The objectives of such a special prosecutor would be threefold. If, in the course of such investigation, special prosecutor shall find evidence of additional wrongdoing he or she believes should be investigated, but that this resolution does not technically cover, he or she shall be authorized to come before the county commissioners who shall expand his or her authority to cover such additional matters to investigate, report upon, and if necessary, prosecute, provided the special prosecutor can show reason for such additional expansion of authority to, to investigate the who, what, where, how, and why of shredded and disappeared documents. Anyone and everyone that may be involved are investigated to find answers. We, the elected officials of the county, the public, and the press will settle for nothing less. We need fully unbiased and impartial legal advice as to Lorraine County's liability for the coverage and destruction of such documents. We need unimpeachable legal advice as to how to promulgate unambiguous rules and procedures as to what documents may be brought into or stored in public county offices, what procedures to take before destroying such documents, and most of all, how to clearly enforce such rules, even in county prosecutor's office. Finally, I again express all of our congratulations and commendations to Jeff Manning, our new county prosecutor, and wish him well. And I would like a second, please.
I don't think, I think the prosecutor's the only one that's allowed to appoint a special prosecutor. It's the last I know. I don't think we have the right or the.
I think in this case, I, I don't believe that.
Well.
And we would be the ones paying for it, and that's what I'm asking the authority to pay for.
Well, I don't know, I saw that, I remember reading the papers when the judges kind of had a little issue with the prosecutor's office that, when they wanted one. And I think I read the paper from the former prosecutor that he is the only one that has the right to do that. So until I, I don't know, until I hear otherwise.
Well, how can you expect that?
I don't want to have a debate on this. Is that right, Jerry? If the prosecutor has that legal right to appoint a special? I'd rather not debate it, but.
Well, in view of the, the allegations of lack of neutrality on that, I don't think I should be the one to, to be commenting on that.
Okay.
I'm not prepared to support the proposal today because I think I am lacking sufficient information to make an informed decision. I'd be happy to review your comments and at a later date say aye or nay, but I'm not prepared to take action today.
All right, I'd like to have this scheduled on the agenda for next week. Actually. No, that is all I have. Thank you.
Can board business be waived?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Hello?
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Vasey? New business, do you want me to just mention that? New business and old business? Because we didn't do that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. As part of new business, the board commissioners will meet on Thursday, May 1, 2003, at 7:00 p.m. Sheffield Township Hall, 5166, excuse me, 5166 Clinton Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio. Therefore, no meeting will be held that morning. Do we want to go into the building codes?
And can I ask that the media publicize that our meeting will be scheduled out of the building here? And it'll be an evening meeting. And also, would you mind putting this information in the paper, too, on the television and stations and the time that we are?
Probably, yeah. Probably, I don't know.
Well, would you check on it to see if you can put an article in there for that, too?
It's not here.
We didn't go through old business. Is there any old business?
Old business? Did you have any?
No, I don't. Okay.
Public hearing time, right?
Yes, public hearing. Anyone in the public that has any comments or questions?
I, I think I'm confused on the agenda. Was there not a 10:45 building code hearing?
That's what I thought we were doing.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
All right. And then, then subsequently, I might have a question to ask.
Thank you. Sir, are you here to speak in regards to the building code? Okay, who is speaking on behalf of the building code? Is that you, Ron?
Think you need to update us on where we stand.
Good morning, Commissioners. As a part of the land use plan, there was a recommendation in there, as you remember, that suggested the county needed to pass a, or put into place, a building code, set of building codes at the county level for the unincorporated areas. And it would have jurisdiction over the R1, 2, and 3 residential construction in the unincorporated areas of Lorraine County. We have worked diligently trying to explore several options on this. We've had numerous discussions, both out in the various communities as well as at least three occasions in front of the Board of County Commissioners. Just a couple of points that I would like to make, and then I will open it up to any comments or questions that anybody has with the permission of the Board. The demographics in Lorraine County and Cuyahoga County are indicating that Cuyahoga County will continue to build out, and places like Medina County, Lake County are filling. The cost of land and other issues have made Lorraine County quite attractive. We only look, need to look to the eastern side of our county and see the development in the last few years, both as an encouragement and as perhaps an alarm. This is not occurring, as some would believe, in only places like Avon, Avon Lake, North Ridgeville. It is also occurring, obviously, in places such as Columbia Township, Eaton Township, Alaria Township, Carlisle Township. Those local township trustees have expressed on numerous occasion several concerns. Carlisle Township has actually put into place their own building department to, to deal with this growth. Your land use plan approved by the county commissioners in the year 2000 actually talks about constructing new houses by the year 2020 in the amount of nearly $31,000. That's if we do very little to manage that residential growth. In fact, between 2000 and 2001, Lorraine County saw an increase in new housing starts of 11%. That was the highest of the Cleveland Metropolitan County areas. By comparison, Medina County in recent times had been leading the charge, and they had actually, between 2000, 2001, seen a decrease in housing starts of about 3%. The numbers are just now coming out for the year 2002. And Lorraine County, while we had an increase between 2000, 2001 of 11%, between 2001 and 2002, new housing starts was up 18 and 1/2% in Lorraine County. That amounted to 1,800 new building starts. Obviously, that takes into consideration the incorporated areas as well as the unincorporated areas. One of the tasks that we were asked to look at by the, for the county commissioners was surrounding counties, how they handled building codes. And in particular, it was suggested we look at Wood County and see what they're doing. While we are the eighth-largest populated county in the state of Ohio, we are one of the few counties in northern Ohio without building codes in our unincorporated areas. At this point, we feel that we have presented the commissioners with several scenarios, and now it's up to the commissioners to establish a policy whether and when there will be building codes in the unincorporated areas. With that, that's my comments for this morning.
Okay. Now, on the sheet that you passed out on the narrative, is this what we're passing today on the narrative and, and concept?
No.
No?
That was just information.
That's just information?
Yeah.
I had questions on the narrative, that's why I didn't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The narrative was more or less just for information background. I didn't go over all of that information. I'd be happy to answer any question. And Rebecca Jones is here to help, too, on that. What you're passing is this. And it, on this document, is labeled as working draft, but that sets up the adoption of the 1999 ABOA Code. And that's what you're really passing.
Okay. On the, on page two of the narrative, it says here that to be, to have a valid license in another qualified municipality, so that someone has to be licensed at least somewhere in this, in the county, or anywhere in the state, I guess.
In the county, we would consider outside of the county if somebody came in and had that. We'll, we'll honor that.
That was just a question I had. And then, and then it says, and pay an annual registration fee. Now, is that, and does that include the fee they pay in the municipalities? Or does that include that the county's going to receive that fee?
We would receive a fee as well.
Okay. So they're going to have to, if they're going to do business in the townships, then they're going to have to pay a.
Correct.
Okay. And then in here, it talks about, with the township trustees, whether or not they want to participate in this program? Then they have to pass a resolution to, to join it?
Yeah, there's two ways that we could set this up. We could really do like Medina County and other counties and said, this is a county building code, and it encompasses all unincorporated areas or township areas. Or we could declare a map and define the map of where those are. We've elected to go that way because not all 18 townships, as Commissioner Vasey surveyed, want this yet, but some need it desperately. So the local resolution will define the boundary of the county jurisdiction.
And it will, in other words, what that'll do is show the townships that have opted to have building codes?
Opted in. And at this point, we think there are probably four of the 18 that would opt in. And that would be where the building codes would take a place, take effect on the 1, 2, and 3 in the township areas.
Ron, I have some concern. It says in here that the building official will be paid by the county's general fund with inspector, while inspectors will be paid from the inspection fees. And when we had our meetings in the township, I believe that we talked about all the building, any expense would be paid through fees and permits. That was my understanding, especially now the way the budget is and, and all the cuts that we're going to be facing. I have some real concern here because I don't believe that we should put another expense on the county that should actually. on the county that should actually be put on either the builder or the developer. Is it possible to figure out how the builder... Building official can be paid through other permits or fees or however?
We can do that if that's the pleasure of the commissioners, because you will set the policy, and if that's your policy to cover all or recuperate all costs, we could do that. Our proposal consistently has been that the... In order to hold the cost of the permit to the builder and to the eventual homeowner down, that we would have... Or we were requesting, suggesting that the general fund pay for the top official, the one that will administer that and answer back. That will be your staff person that you make sure you have control over to administer the program the way you want, and rather than having that paid out of fees, we have historically suggested that that come out of the general fund. If your direction is to cover it out of the fees, we could set it up that way.
Well, we could do any surplus of the fees could be used to offset the cost of the general fund, right?
Right.
Do we have to pass that today, or is this like the beginning of something? We're going to have several more meetings to design the policy or the...
We're hoping that we are at the point where you can pass that today, and then we will keep the board informed and administer and set this up as you see fit. The one scenario that we passed out on the funding had a shortfall of about $35,000, the first... $30,000 the first year, and by year five, we felt that there would be enough continued housing and permit fees that you'd be back at ground zero. So, Commissioner, to your point, for three or four years, there may be a, you know, an expense to the general fund, but our hope is we can have that set up. Now, if you want us to speed that timeframe up, we'll adjust our permits.
I think we should speed it up. I think that all staff should be under the commissioners.
Okay.
But I do believe that that staff should be paid for through permits and fees. Carlisle Township now has a building inspector, and the county is not involved in that, and we do not pay for any of that.
Correct.
So, I believe if they, you know, if they can do it, I believe that with the four other townships that will be involved here, that those... That staff member or members or whatever expenses from the building department that we set up can be paid through other sources other than the general fund.
I think that's where this is going to head... End up anyway. I think I'm upset that only four are participating, but I'm hoping that they'll see the good that's going on, and the townships, and they'll all start jumping on and participating, so...
And I think that's the case. We have between seven and nine that are seriously looking at that, but I think the number right now to the first round will probably be four rather quickly. There's one township that says the issue shouldn't be who's first. The issue should be, let's make sure we're not last, and I would agree with that.
Exactly, okay. Well, that's... And then on your expenses here, is it like a base of $4,500 on the contractuals? Is that the base that you guys are guaranteeing? Because it says here inspectors will be hired on a contractual basis of $4,500 per year, which they'll be responsible for 120 inspections per year. I mean, if it's the first year, we only end up doing 60. I mean, is that an issue or...
Right. We were basing that on a minimum number of inspections, and we would probably actually pay them a per-inspection fee.
Okay, so it's not going to be a minimum... They're not going to get a minimum of $4,500, are they?
So, right, so it... That may fluctuate.
That was the only question I had then.
Okay, so will our resolution have to be changed to note that this will fluctuate?
I hope... Where's the... We're passing a doc of this thing.
My feeling was that you would regulate that through the budget process.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's going to be a department of the general fund and a department of the Board of Commissioners, and if you felt that they needed to have a balance by year two, you would just set the budget up, and they would balance through Mr. Ocasie the revenues and expenses, and that would be where you would do that, not through the resolution. But if you want that in here, that's fine.
Well, I was just concerned because I believe it is in that paperwork that we're going to be voting on.
But it does give us the ability to change on the fly, right?
Correct.
That's all I want to know.
Yep.
Okay, and where would that be written at?
Rebecca!
You know, the old... Not that it's nothing, Ron, it's truth through verification sometimes is... I'd just like to see it.
Well, you don't always have the same commissioners here, and whatever's in the resolution is what they're going to go by.
Right, which I've found.
Okay, I think the resolution that you're passing is basically adopting the building codes, the 1999 ABOA codes, and then setting up the county building department with... That would be headed by a certified building official. It doesn't necessarily speak to the fees or any...
But what about the staffing? If we decide to change the way we staff or compensate?
That would be done through the budget, I believe. I don't think that that actually occurs in this resolution.
That's not addressed in this resolution?
There's a proposed building permit fee schedule that was attached to the documentation that was given to us in December.
Yes, that's part of... Part of a narrative, and that's only proposed, just like the...
Well, how are we going to establish these fees? That's... I think that's the question that's being asked.
Okay, and I think that that... My sense is that the fees will be established through either our department working with that building official that eventually is identified to sit down and really put that fee schedule together. That fee schedule that you have in front of you is a proposed fee schedule.
So, it's not part of the document?
It's not part of the document, no.
Okay, thank you.
The document is the resolution and the building codes themselves, and then the 1999 ABOA codes.
So, when you guys... You're going to have to come back to this board then to pass the...
Fee structure.
The fee structure.
Budgets and all of that.
And the budget. Okay.
Yes.
And that's where you would regulate.
That makes... Okay, I understand.
All right, now, it's my understanding that this building inspector will be under the community development, under... Will this person be under Ron?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then Ron, so in other words, what you'll do is you'll hire the person as needed?
Right.
Not that it's going to be someone permanently on staff over there that may wait for somebody from one of the townships to call him?
Yeah, and the only change, slight change I would like to say is, yeah, temporarily, we've agreed to have it under us, and we'd be happy to foster that as long as possible, but I think ultimately it will become its own department and will be directly under Mr. Cortez and the Board of County Commissioners on its own.
Eventually, yes.
Yeah, but initially, to get this up and running, it could have gone one of three places. It could go through our department under you, it could go directly to the county engineer, and Mr. Carney has suggested, in my conversations with him, it may, in his opinion, be more appropriate under the Board of Commissioners since you're the funding source. And the third place it could go because of the plumbing codes would be the health department, and they said that they would rather work with the Board of County Commissioners on the plumbing portion.
Effective date? What are you requesting for is an effective date?
If you ask the townships, that was January 2002 or before. We're saying at the earliest, at the earliest, we're looking at the end of May in order to get everything up and running, so we would like to see or suggest June 1st. Again, that's your call. If you think that's too quick, slow it down. If you think it's too fast, but we think we could have everything in place by June 1st for an effective date.
Thank you.
The townships need a little time to pass local resolutions, too.
As long as we get it passed with a date.
Right.
They're not ready until June 5th, you know? That's why I make sure our job is done.
Sure.
Okay, just to be clear, I'm sensing that, or at least it's my preference, that it go through the commissioners to you, Ron.
Okay.
And that you would hire this building inspector as needed until this thing gets off the ground.
I'm sure he's going to call us and come back to us, so...
And that the fees and permits would cover the cost of the... This addition.
Okay.
Okay, I would move to... To move forward with this, with the... I would move to adopt a...
I'll second.
With those... With that clause in there.
Yeah, I think to make it clear though, basically, the fees we're going to... Basically, the general fund's going to fund it, and the fees that we collect will offset those costs. We're not going to identify this person as general fund this one. We're just going to say as much... All the money comes in, it's all going to cover it.
We should make provisions for an advance to get us up and running, and then to reimburse the advance with the fees, because we'll need some operating capital to move.
Maybe we do that after we pass the building code.
Okay, just... Well, I'm just letting you know that we want to incorporate it into your...
We could probably do that between now and June 1st, all right?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Let's just have a discussion on whether or not to pass the building codes, and then we'll worry about funding and everything else maybe another day when Ron comes back with a program.
Did you second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Further discussion? Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
I would thank the commissioners so much for passing this. You know, it took us two years to get a... Adopt a highway program in Lorain County. Then with the floodplain, we were 85 out of 88 counties. I'm just tired of being the dog's tail instead of the dog's nose. I'm glad the commissioners are moving forward at this. Thank you very much.
Ernie, would you please give your name for the...
Ernie Walker, trustee, Eaton Township.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
I think that you wanted to speak to Ken.
I'd like to introduce myself.
Oh, good.
Trustee Ken Prechtel, Carlisle Township.
Good morning, Mr. Prechtel.
I too congratulate the commissioners for adopting the code for Lorain County. Carlisle adopted the ABOA 99 several months back. My only question, and I think Mrs. Vacy hit it on the head, Commissioner Moore, he's just kind of in there for the ride, and Commissioner Blair didn't say anything.
I wouldn't say I'm in it for the ride. There's a lot of paperwork we've gone through.
But the cost that is going to be incurred better be looked at really close, because I can honestly tell you that it's costing Carlisle Township in the area of $75,000 per year to support a building department and the codes that are in effect under the ABOA 99. To think that it can be supported purely by fees kind of is, in my opinion, a dream. We, in Carlisle, adjusted our fees when we adjusted the ABOA 99. We had a gentleman in here when you were having the public hearings that said he likes to build in Lorain County because he can save $8,000 per home and provide substandard buildings in the unincorporated areas. Well, when we adopted the ABOA 99, we had to adopt the fees that went with it. What we did is we looked at Avon, Avon Lake, North Ridgeville, Allyria, and the areas that had a building code in effect and the fees that it took to support the code. We firmly planted ourself in the middle. We're not the high guy, and we're not the low guy. We're the middle guy. When we implemented that code, the first thing that we had was outrage from some of the builders that are in Carlisle. Why do we have to pay so much? Goodness gracious, what about this cost, and what about that cost? We constantly, for several months, had to explain, and it's an issue that shouldn't have to be explained if you want to build in Carlisle. This is what it costs. When I told them that we were in the middle, they told me that they could go to the other unincorporated areas and build for $50 to $200. Well, I thought the reason for the billing code was to bring everything up to snuff. We met with the Ohio Board of Building Standards to verify the qualifications of our department because we had builders coming in. Who are you guys? What qualifies you to be a building inspector? What qualifies them to be a builder? They build one house and say, "I am a builder." We inspect that house, and we got to prove our credential. The Ohio Board of Building Standards is also working with us to proceed to our next goal, and that is to be able to enforce our... And use our state license. So, no one can be hired for on an as-needed basis. You're going to need, if you're going to go all the way, a full-time department. The only other thing that I would ask on that resolution, instead of the opt-in, opt-out, would be anybody that's not in to be exempt. That way, somewhere down the road, when we've all gone to our great reward, there's not a legal battle over our worth each. Other than that, I support the building code. But these townships that are going to opt in, Mr. Walker in Eaton, Mr. Rundle in Columbia, better be prepared to adjust the fees and then take some of the flak that'll go with it. Now, we are in a position, under Ohio Revised Code 9.48, to help these communities that need it, to get it off the ground. You know, but it goes way beyond the resolution that we want to be part of it. They could have been part of it on their own without the commissioners doing their work, but to go beyond, we can help, and we'll be glad to help, and Ohio Revised Code 9.48 lets us do it. It's a service to other communities on the line item of that... That part of the revised code. But I think Mary Jill is right on track when she's looking at the cost to implement.
Well, it's my thought, you know, whatever the cost is, that that's what the builder should pay because they're getting a safer home and even...
The minute that it's put to the builder, then the builder decides that's too much. He don't want it.
Well, it...
Well, it's a tough deal, but you got to do it.
It decreases their profit, but nevertheless, it increases the security of the home, the safety of the person living in that home.
I don't agree or disagree one bit. I just... If there's going to be a county fee and then a community fee, pretty soon, you know, the builders start adding it all up, and I don't think totally with the... I mean, I agree the building's coming, and it's deifkum, but is there going to be enough building to support what's going to have to come out of the... Would have to come out of the county general fund? And I think you were on track that if a community adopts it, then they better be prepared to incur some of the cost on their own without putting that squeeze on the commissioner's office to shore some of this up. So, in my opinion, that's something that is really going to have to be reviewed. If they want to adopt early before you implement that department, then we are in a position to help them, and we'll gladly work with them, and...
That's good.
Revised code lets us do it.
See, and another thing too, like Ron was saying, the cities have their own building inspectors, and it isn't fair for the city residents to have to pay for those in the townships. And I think that that's another reason for those fees to be paid for...
Right.
The expense to be paid for.
That's exactly right, that if a township...
And people should realize too, this is a residential code for one, two, and three family dwellings, and that the commercial is controlled by the state, commercial codes.
Well, this is true, but the state's also looking at now to unify and go with a ABOA 99, say, statewide. So, this could be a mission in fragility that we're doing right now. Point is that we do have a vision to do it, but I just... I feel that if commissioners adopt the ABOA 99 in Lorain County and then let some of the well-intentioned go ahead and help each other out, it won't put a stranglehold on the county budget, which is like this. And we do have the ability, we've offered our services to Allyria Township. We were invited to Penfield, and we run the program by the people in that area, and we've offered, and we'd be more than glad to help Eaton and Columbia get their... offered, and we'd be more than glad to help Eaton, Columbia get theirs up and running, along with Mr. Twining and his department, and be able to help them almost immediately with enforcement, and just not put you guys in a situation where you got to get something passed by May first or June first or whatever, take more time to research it before you got it handled.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or my building inspector can answer on our behalf, but that's, you know...
Thank you.
From the beginning, we weren't opposed to the building code. Our concern was that we've invested time and money and effort to get it off the ground, and we didn't want to lose all that that we've put into it. But there will be resistance from the builders because they don't want it on their backs. We had to readjust a little bit on the, this wastewater management issue that's came before the county after thirty-two years, and first thing in is, "What's this?" Well, hey, when the EPA wants to know where the water's going to go, and we got a lot of east brines and west brines to our community, well, it had to do with where's the water go from all the new construction. They didn't want to support that at all. Well, it cost us over a thousand dollars to put a very basic report that we were required to submit to EPA. Well, when they give us all this stuff, there's nowhere for where the money's going to come from, and we make the adjustment, and then the builder gets aggravated because, and the question, and the thing that I heard was, "I underquoted the cost of my house by three hundred dollars." Because now you've implemented this, and I sold the house, I lost three hundred dollars. So what they're doing is putting it on the consumer's back anyway.
Sure. Okay, thanks again.
Thank you for your time.
And thanks to Carlisle Township for their offer of assistance. Dale?
Good morning. I'm Dale Rundle from Columbia Township. I'm also the president of the Lorraine County Trustees and Clerks Association, and the vice president of the Northeast Trustees and Clerks Association, and that has eighteen counties that we incorporate in the Northeast. And I would like to thank three commissioners. I know Mr. Blair's worked on it for thirty-plus years trying to get a building code, and Ms. Vacy, you have legitimate concerns that you have to address, and I know Mr. Moore's put a lot of time and thought into it. And I, I'll tell you the truth, as I've traveled around the different counties, the biggest question is, why doesn't Lorraine County have a building code? And I'm glad to see that you're really addressing it now. And as far as the cost, I believe you'll find out that with the homes being built in our area, I know last year we had approximately sixty-seven built, we've got another one hundred and thirty-four this year, so that's almost double what we had going into this. And what the trustees are worried about, and what our residents come to our meetings and the concerns they have, is they want the health, the welfare, and the safety of our communities maintained, and this would be a very good tool to maintain their way of life, shall we say, because I could tell you horror stories, you've heard them all before, but I'd just like to thank you, and I know we can work with Mr. Twining's office as association or as individual townships. And I do believe that if cost is one of the main problems, that can be addressed in the fee schedule, and it's, like we were told before, it's going to cost a little bit for startup, but I believe we could recoup it. And I know in Columbia, we've had the state code for our commercial areas. I've only been in sixteen years, so I know we were in the county building, I'm not in the state building code, we have our own inspector that does that for our residents, and it's worked out very good, and I believe this will be the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the issue? Or have any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there any, anyone from, that wanted, would like to address the board on any other issues?
Good morning. My name's Don Flotter from Carlisle Township, and I'm here in regards to the wastewater district that Oracle wants to implement on us, and I've been circulating a petition. I've got about two hundred signatures of residents that are against us, and, like I say, as of today, I have over two hundred signatures, and which I'm going to distribute to Nawaka, the Lorraine County Commissioners, and our township trustees. And I just thought I'd inform you that what I'm doing and how many signatures I already have. The, most of the people say they cannot afford it, and it's being forced on us. And so you should be receiving shortly a packet with all the signatures that's on the petitions.
When do you think we'll get that? When do you think you'll have that?
Sir?
Pardon?
When do you think you'll have that information?
Well, I, I don't know, but it'd probably be by the end of this week.
Okay, great. Okay, we'll look forward to seeing it then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Don.
My name is Ellen Painter, and I'm superintendent of the Board of Mental Retardation, and I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation on behalf of the board, the staff, the consumers and their families, for your support of our renewal levy. Since the levy represents approximately twenty-five percent of our entire budget, and we too, right now, have to withstand the severe federal and state cuts, it's especially important to us that this renewal levy passes. So thank you so much for your resolution.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
Morning, Dr. Painter. Thank you for coming.
This is perhaps unfair to Mr. Twining, for whose memory I have enormous respect, but in connection with the transportation district, I seem to remember from the county plan that there was some mention made in that, and I wondered if Mr. Twining could just very briefly indicate what it is I don't remember.
If I used the line "I don't remember," it would be real brief. We did do a multimodal transportation plan, and the TID was mentioned in there as a critical element, and it was strongly endorsed by the citizens and the consultant to the Board of Commissioners that the TID moved forward, so I'm glad to see that we are doing just that today. It is, while planning dollars are available, that planning dollars are not for planning in my arena, but plans for transportation and engineering costs, and, and it's more than planning as I often think about it. So it is engineering as well as planning, and it's for those really big transportation projects that are out there. Initially, you have to engineer for them, plan for them, and then get funding in order to, to implement those, and it gets to the bonding ability of the jurisdiction and the general obligation funds of the county and things like that. But the highlight, the short version of the multimodal plan, was that TIDS have worked very well, both in the state of Ohio and in other states, and Lorraine County had adopted a TID, and they needed to move forward on that.
We'll move into exact.
I'll second.
Okay.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.